Evening call to the town of St. John Plan Commission Study Session for May 7, 2025. Would invite all that are able to stand up for a pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is every athlete, can we get the roll call, please?
Joe Gomez Tagel.
Present.
Rudy Bambic is absent. John Gill.
Here.
Russ Vogel.
Here.
Justin Esther.
Present.
Colin Enchway.
Present.
Ashley Abernathy, present. Adam Decker.
Present.
John Daxter.
Here.
Bill Manisoplis.
Here.
All right, gangs all here, minus one. Item four, old new business. Item A, 2025-04, gates of St. John, units thirty-two through forty, proposed primary plat for residential development located east of Blaine Street between Ninety-third Avenue, Hundred First Avenue. Mr. Kell, good evening.
Good evening. Last time I was here, we had a list of engineering comments. I can report tonight that all of those comments have been addressed. They have been all of Adam's, Mr. McAlpine's questions have been answered. I did speak with him today, and I asked him if it would be a fair statement to make to the Plan Commission tonight that in two weeks, he feels that everything should be sufficient where primary plat approval can be sought. So that's been diligently followed up on. I also, I did, we did apply to IDEM. We've done our MS4 work, paid our appropriate fees to the town, and all that stuff has been applied for. So we are moving forward, and we'll be asking for primary plat approval. So if anybody has any questions, I just, I know we wanted to do a follow-up tonight just to see where things were at and how things were progressing and how the engineering was coming along. So that's what I can report to you tonight.
Okay. From the town's perspective?
I can confirm that we did receive over the weekend the resubmital with the engineering response letter from Teranga, as well as the updated engineering. I will need to touch base with our engineer and make sure that everything is up to date on it and get his response letter from it. But we have received that updated civil engineering plan set and then that response letter from their engineer to our engineer.
Okay. Should be on track for two weeks.
Should be on track.
And like I said, all of our fees are paid, so.
Anyone else, questions, comments?
I think that was probably the bigger concern that I think a lot of us had was the, just the length of that list and making sure that those things got addressed, so.
Just, I agreed. I agree, I agree absolutely.
Okay. All right, well then we'll see you back in two weeks, and we'll take it up then.
Thank you.
Item B, 2025-09, Grace Church, NWI subdivision, proposed primary plat and site plan for a proposed ministry center to be located at 12632 Wicker Avenue, Sierra Lake, Indiana, Grace Church.
I do have a script notice correction to make on that one. The correct address is 13809 West 109th Avenue, not 12632 Wicker Avenue. That's the location of the, of the mailing address for the property owners. The actual address of the property is located on 109th here in town.
13809 West 109th. All right, thank you. Mr. Husk, good evening.
Good evening. I don't have much to report tonight, just wanted to provide a general status update on the project. First, I would like to thank the town's engineer for such an expeditious review of both the plat and our first engineering submittal. We received minor primary plat comments on March 25th and the engineering set on April 17th. We had a little hiccup before getting formalized and on agendas, but we're going to be returning responses to the, both those comments the next week or two. I reviewed them already, and so has my director of surveying. We've addressed much of the engineering comments, so resubmital will be coming. Our remaining action, action items on that project is to formally initiate the driveway permit process with Lake County Highway Department, and we have our wetland consultant initiating any permits needed for the water main extension underneath the ditch slash creek at the north end of the property. The builder will also be soliciting bids in the very near future to inform the estimate of probable cost, and we have not received any additional commentary from both the fire and police departments. Just to recap our intended schedule, we expect to be back here, you, back before you in two weeks requesting permission to advertise for that primary plat and hoping for our plat hearing in June, and expect everything will be tidied up before requesting final approval in July.
All right. Questions, comments, anyone?
I have not been able to get it over to you, but I do have one police comment that has been received, and that's more related to site plan, so it's something that we can work out as a site plan goes forward, and it's that they would like to see, let me get up to the site plan, hold on. They would like to see a, the ability for somebody who's turning left to have the ability to turn left off of 109th without preventing any traffic flow. They'd like a left turn hand, a left turn in lane.
Like a left turn in lane or a passing bluster?
I'll double check where his email is, and I'll get that comment over tomorrow.
Would appreciate it, yeah. We can work that in before we, we will be talking to Duane either way, but preferably get the, the town's take on which they would prefer.
Yep, yep. And I, I have communicated, I, when I got that, I meant to send it to you as well, but I did send it to Duane, so Duane is aware of it when you communicate with him.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Item C, 2025-10, Park West, petition to amend the zoning map of the St. John, Indiana Plan Commission's jurisdictional area by reclassifying from C2 District to PUD, located Calumet Avenue approximately 193.5 feet south of 101st Avenue. Mr. Kell?
Yes, this is a, as you recall, I did appear at one study session, this would be my second one on this, just to refresh everybody's memory. This project is a very small project on the west side of Calumet Avenue, just south of Providence Bank. The request is going to be for 160 townhome units, various sized buildings incorporated into the plan is going to be a fully developed lot for a fire station for the town to utilize at their discretion. Since I last met, we did meet with the developer across the street, Brad Lambert, I'm sure everybody's familiar with Brad. We discussed the water main extensions, the looping of the mains and all that, and we've, and I know Public Works has talked to Brad Lambert as well, and so we're working together to make sure that everything's put in place and everything is agreeable to the town. This is a zone change request. I did advertise, I do have my white cards that I have not given Ashley yet because I was going to do that this Friday, and I'm waiting for the green cards to come back, and I've got most of them, so I will go ahead and make that submittal to Ashley this Friday for, you know, just the adjacent property owners list, the proof of publication, things like that, that she is going to need.
Okay.
And that's kind of where we're at.
Questions, comments, anyone?
I had minor comments when I read through the PUD. When I came in, I provided them to Steve, and he has already provided me the updated documents, which I have already, which was included in your guys' packet, so it's already those updated, those corrections have already been made.
All right.
They were very minor in nature.
Anyone? No? All right, then we'll see you back in two weeks.
Two weeks. Thank you.
It's May 21, right?
Yeah.
I count, at fourteen today?
Yep. It'll be the 21st.
Item D, 2022-04, Crop Industrial Park U-Lock, request to amend the previous approvals to allow for an office and outdoor storage to be located on the property located at 9550 Hart Street, American Management LLC.
So to give a little bit of background before the petitioner starts speaking on this one, back in 22, I believe, a different owner came in front of the Plan Commission proposing the site plan that you see in front of you currently during those meetings. It was requested and asked that there be no office space there. The person agreed because they were going to be making people go to their location in Sheriville for signing up and getting a U-Lock. And additionally, it was asked if there's going to be outdoor storage, and again, he said no. After those approvals were granted, he went through the subdivision process, it was then transferred to the petitioners that you see in front of you in 23. We flagged them a couple months ago for having an office and outdoor storage, which violated the previous approvals with, with the 22 approvals that were granted. So they're here tonight to seek their, the ability to have an office on-site for, by appointment only, so that people can come in and sign contracts and for some outdoor storage to be located along. This would be the closest to the railroad portion of the property. What's in blue is already built, what's in green is currently under construction. And so that is kind of why they're in front of here today, because it, it's something that if they want to continue doing it, they would need the Plan Commission approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Sure. Why not? Thank you.
Would you like us to speak?
Please, go ahead.
We're a little, John Gruen and my wife Pam Gruen, my wife's the manager of the project. There's fifteen buildings, I'm sorry, there's fourteen buildings that were originally approved. We're learning a little more about, we're, we're secondhand, of course, but there's fourteen buildings which will be constructed, which were engineered by DVG. There's 261 feet that is against the railroad tracks that we would like to use for tasteful outdoor storage, and my wife will have a little insight on that, but there's, that'll be 262 feet, it's roughly twenty to twenty-two spaces, which would not infringe on the fire truck access and so forth. The, if you look at the drawing, it goes, there's, it goes five buildings and another five, and then the lot steps in a little bit, so that's why there's only fourteen instead of fifteen. So the, it'd be the southwest corner, there is not a fifth building because of the size of the lot. So as we are here today, and my wife is going, will continue from there.
Well, I wouldn't say I'm the manager, we're, we co-do this, but my name, my phone number's on the sign, so I'm the one that actually is the friendly face, I hope, to the people who call American Storage of St. John. And thank you for listening to our request tonight to allow perhaps 23 spaces to our site here. The demand for outdoor storage in St. John in, in the region is real. Coming into this, I really didn't, I was not aware, but John and I opened American Storage, our first day of opening was actually November 1st in 2023, and I was a little disappointed because our first calls were all for outdoor storage, not for our beautiful storage units over there. And then I quickly learned that St. John had a subdivision ordinance that prohibited RVs, campers, boats, and trailers to be in the driveways from November 1st, I think, through March 31st. So consequently, the calls. I took down a list of names, and I, I got them over the next coming months, the, the name, list of names continued to grow. So I, I kept saying, if we ever decide to offer this, I will connect back with you. And then almost a year later, it was September last year, 2024.
And we're reluctant in the beginning because of construction, and it's small money in a sense. We didn't want anyone saying, oh, we got dust on our camper or whatnot, so it was never even, that's one reason.
Right, he's like, oh, we don't want any.
We don't want the trouble, you know?
Trouble with that, or, you know, trucks are going through their concrete mixer trucks and things, so no damage to anybody's property. But I kept receiving these calls, so I felt huge pressure from the people in the community that they needed this, and we had the space, and I knew that we did, so I had a serious talk with John, and I said, you know what, we got this back corner, this southwest corner where we don't, we can't even, we're not going to put a building or anything, it's wide open even when we are finished with the project. So I'm like, how about we put ten spaces there? And he said, okay. He nicely painted diagonal lines on there, made little placards with numbers one through ten kind of a thing. So, yeah, so if you'll see on your sign there, all the way to the southwest corner, which is in the far right bottom there, we had the ten spaces. So I started calling the people on my list, and ten spaces filled instantaneously, and I still had a list. So then I said, honey, maybe, we were already feeling we weren't going to be popping these buildings up.
Yeah, they, they weren't running near as quickly as we anticipated, especially the 10 by 30s, which was.
These back buildings.
On the back row. And we actually had a permit for that, and we, and we voided that permit, so we painted, we painted.
We painted ten more spots.
Ten more spots, yes.
And they filled.
Right.
So now we had twenty spaces there, and we, we know we had a little pavement area on both sides of that last building here in Phase One. This blue area is what has, we call Phase One, and we have a lot of units rented in this, and now John in the green area are, these are new buildings that we're just constructing now, so that we're ahead of the demand. But we put two spots over here and one on this side of the building, and those are paved spots, but then there's twenty spots here, so that totals 23 at this point. So we think that you would agree, if you saw this, that they, we thoughtful, we did a tasteful and thoughtful job of setting these up. The location of the outdoor spaces are ideal because they're discreetly set up on the back of the lot, behind the buildings. Our facility is up on a hill, so when you're going down Hart Street, you're not even seeing campers or anything up there, and then both sides of our facility are nestled by the Hart Street woods there. So it's our hope tonight that you would help us continue to provide these spaces to the community, that you would approve this, and.
And we actually do apologize, we didn't realize, we, we never thought that it was an issue not to do it, you know?
Until Ashley came in.
You know, we, we have twelve or fourteen acres there, and a lot of us floodplain, but we never even crossed our mind that there'd be an issue if somebody put their camper there instead of a building, so.
We really were not trying to, you know, disobey St. John ordinances or decrees here, so. But, yeah, the more I talked to John about it, he's like, why don't we do this? This is a huge undertaking on our part. We have huge financial obligations, it costs money to build new buildings, and we had hoped it would even go quicker, but, yeah, this is, we've got the space now, so we would just appreciate getting feedback from you that is positive that.
It's interesting that the, the storage went almost instantaneously, and so you said, well, how many rental units do you actually rent? It might be one or two a week, you know? And that kind of touches on the whole office situation. When we started, we have what we call media room, and we, we built it that way with the electric and everything, it was all inspected, blah, 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 but we have screens, so when people pull one, they can see their, their, their storage unit on the, on the monitors.
Through the glass window and doors, you can see the.
There's a, maybe a 12 picture oversized television they see through the glass. And that's, we, we put a desk in there, and we've been meeting people, most, eighty, ninety percent of the people sign up online, and that, that's what makes it a very nice business. You wouldn't, you don't meet the people, you don't, there's, there's no face involved, you know? But the older people.
Yeah, I would say, what, when we do meet the people, is we, we have had, prior to this, we've had somebody sitting in there, either myself or our office manager, and so they, we would leave the gate up when we're there, and we want them to be able to come to the door and say, hey, could you show us a, you know, a 10 by 20, a 10 by 30, or whatever? And we didn't realize that that wasn't permissible either. We don't have a bathroom in there or anything, and so we have since now taken that off of our door, and we're just doing by appointment only. If people call, then I meet them over there, or our office manager, Allison, will come by and sign them up if they can't maneuver the website, so.
Where are you proposing to put the office?
It, it's located now in the, the north building on the Hart side, and it's.
It's in unit.
Number one.
Unit one.
Okay.
Yeah, so when you go past and you, you go up the hill and the gate is there, it's, you'll see we have a window and a door there where you can see the media.
Right, it's, it's in, it's in a 10 by 30 unit, the, the very first unit when you pull up, we use it for construction as well, but, yeah.
Yeah.
And it, it actually has the overhead, it's actually built exactly per plan, it has the overhead door on it, whatnot, the only difference is it has a large glass door so you can see through to the monitors in, in there for the media room, and obviously so we could walk through and sign people up temporarily and have meetings in there for construction and whatnot. But it's actually somewhat a, more of a temporary office, I mean, we're hoping that.
Well, when the site is filled, then we won't need.
Then it's done, right.
An office so much anymore, I don't think, but it's convenient to have, and we think that's tasteful as well.
Yeah, and.
He didn't want to spend the money on that beautiful window and door, but.
Right. One other que, just because when this was approved, it predated my being on the Plan Commission. Was there any, does anybody know, was there any sort of feedback or concern about outdoor storage on that, on the, on the property? John, anybody?
Um, I don't think so, because the, the petitioner that presented said that he wasn't in the outdoor storage business.
And I do know a little bit about that, actually, if I may. The fellow that we bought it from owns My Box in Sheriville, and they, they have an office for My Box and for 41 U-Lock, and they have outdoor stores there, and they're on-site, so this was actually just going to be an, just storage only, they weren't going to, they were just going to have.
Yeah, because that's what, he said that there wouldn't be an office, because you would go to, I think it's at 77th and 41, where he'd say you'd sign up there, get your clicker or whatever for the gate to let you in, and then go down there and put your stuff in, so that's why he said there was no need for an office when he was going through the site plan.
Trying to figure out if there was opposition to any outdoor storage at the time this was approved, before we go back and change that or amend it for you, that's, that's what I was trying to figure out.
See anything in the minutes when I looked there on.
You didn't see anything in the minutes? I thought there was a big issue about that, having an outdoor and also.
Well, I don't think, yeah, I, I don't think it ever came up because he, there was no application. I think anybody who wants outdoor storage has to then go through a variance process.
Right.
Because that, that would have been required as part of the approval.
And I think that was mentioned to him.
Right, I, as I recall, he, he didn't even ask for the variance for outdoor storage because he said that this was just going to be additional units.
May, may I ask you, were you aware of that? Were you purchased that? No, we weren't. So. Never, we never even thought that far, or was never our ambition, you know, I mean, we were just, we sold a couple of power and buildings, and we were happy to do a 1031 exchange to, to start the project, we thought it'd be a great retirement project in a sense, you know? We, we don't know anything about that.
Yeah, it was not until the phone calls.
Yeah, we, yeah, we never.
Where we realized the, the need.
And shame on us, I mean, you know, maybe we rented for $60 a stall, it's, it's not, it's not that big of a deal, but part of our conversation between my wife and I was, and this actually did happen, we said, if we get some outdoor storage, maybe they'll rent a, a unit as well, you know, for $160, you know, so in a sense, we use it as sort of an advertising tactic as well, but it just instantaneously filled up the 20 spots. And the truth be told, it's very nice, the people are great, the police chief has a vehicle in there as well.
His boat.
His boat there, standing hammers.
But you would recognize them.
I don't think I would know that.
Cook builders, they storage trade.
I don't think, yeah.
La, 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 anyway, um, and then one last question I had, Ashley, if you can leave that up, so this shows what's built right now, right?
Yeah, as of April 16.
Yeah, so I mean, I understand the building, the, the newer part.
Phase two are under construction.
Yeah, phase two on your app is the part under construction. What's to prevent in the future, if you came back and said, well, we just want to do all outdoor storage on, instead of building the rest of any future phases of actual storage units?
I don't, I'm hoping that's not necessary. I mean, we're approved for 14 units, and, and if we, and our plan is to build three, four buildings a year, and, and I, we're hoping that the, the demand's going to continue. As I sit in here, sometimes I thought I was in the wrong room with all the subdivisions coming. We believe it's going to go. It's a slower process, you might get rid of a couple of units a, a week, but that's 150 units, each building's about 35 units, so every year we, we should move to, to three or four. We're asking for approval, and, and we'll put a number on it. I mean, if we, if we had 22 spaces, I, I think that we're serving the community well, and it's tastefully planted, and it won't inhibit the fire trucks, anything, no issues, it's completely out of the way, especially being that that 15th building, there wasn't room when, when DVG designed it for, for, and I don't know why, it wasn't my issue, why it wasn't put on there, maybe the setbacks or whatever it might have been, but there's plenty of room, and I'd like to welcome anyone up that have a tour to, to see the, the project. We're actually quite proud of it, it turned out very, very nice.
This is a good picture, an overhead.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I could walk and show you just, yeah, so, so this here, we, we have five, and there's going to be five identical again, and there's only four here. But when we did it, we, we made, when I measured from, from curb to curb, it's 262 feet from our north curb to our south curb, and we want to utilize just the west side against the tracks with that 262, if you divide it by 12, that's how we're kind of coming up with the, and a 12-foot space is actually very comfortable for.
Yeah, it is, and I actually knew the size of all these vehicles that were coming because I would say, well, how long is your camper, how long is your trailer? So I've got them positioned on-site where it goes, you know, the larger to smaller to fit really well there. And you could see that on the picture well.
How easy is it to get boats or campers back there, or would it be when there's 14 buildings?
Very easy. The DVG designed it for the, for the fire truck to come through, we, we have 30 feet between the buildings, I think it's like 29 six, absolutely no problem at all. And when we painted the, the lines of the use, and now, we put them on a 45-degree angle so the people, and they don't pull those campers every day, and we were aware of that, and that's why we also made them 12 feet wide.
They're good parkers, though. They come down to the last aisle, and they come here, they pull past, and then they back in, and then they come around, and they go down the next aisle.
Right.
We had, you know, signage that said, you know, how they should go and how they should exit, so.
So, those are my questions, anyone else?
So when you, when you build the fifth building in the second row, would 04 through 013 be eliminated then?
All right, the, well, there'll be three, there'll be three to the south of the fifth building, and it'll be, it'll, they'll be straight. I'm a, there's a little bit of slop in there now.
Uh-huh.
There's actually, there's actually three, there's 30 feet between each building, so we'll be able to get three spaces in, in between each one. Yes, when, when we build the, the fifth one, the, the, the fifth one in the second phase, that would happen, but I'm not so sure how fast that's going to happen, because we thought the 10 by 30s, there's a stronger market for, they're actually renting slower than the 10 by 10s and the 10 by 20s. It's funny to kind of guess what people need, you know?
Mm-hmm.
It's the market. It's, it's quite, quite interesting that we thought the 10 by 30s would be hot, and they're, they're actually, the 10 by 10s are what we're out of, and who would think, you know?
And we would probably, we are, it is our hope to build the three buildings in Phase Two, and then we may build that, start into Phase Three, so we're still steering away from outdoor storage initially, because we don't know that we're, instead of putting this building up, this 10 by 30 building up, we'll put this 10 by 30 building up and do these, leaving this clear until there's a need for that.
And even if they were constructed, there's still 30 feet.
There's still.
30 feet in between, they're coming in at a 45-degree angle, 30 feet is very comfortable.
Just so I can understand the totality of what's going on here, so on this drawing that we're, or diagram that we're looking at, north is to the left.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Should have put that on there.
Or it says Phase One and Phase Two is Hart Street.
Yep, yep. Ashley, can you put the site plan, or, and/or that, that plan and the, the aerial, like, side by side? Is that possible?
Yeah.
That's better, thank you. Um, sorry. This is, this is, this is what I do all day, is look at these kind of things. Um, okay.
So they're doing this already, right? May I ask a question here? You're already parking cars, there are parking vehicles there, right? Correct. And you're coming up here now to ask for permission to do that? Yes, yeah, Ashley, Ashley reprimanded us, we, we didn't realize that we were out of line, yes.
The town's already taken action, yeah.
Okay.
Ashley stated earlier.
Yeah.
That the town saw it was happening, and that's why we brought the petitioner back.
Okay, good. Cool.
So I learned in land use in law school, it's better to ask for permission or forgive
That the town saw it was happening and that's why we brought the petitioner back.
Okay, good. Cool.
So I learned in land use and law school, it's better to ask for permission or forgiveness. They're now back for permission.
And forgiveness.
And forgiveness. Yeah, for sure, yeah.
You're an attorney.
Anyone else, questions, comments?
The next building you're going to start on is the, the far south one after this, isn't it? Because you could see everything as you're coming north down Hart Street.
Actually, it would be the, the.
The third one in phase two, we've paid for.
It would be the, in phase two, it would be the third, third and the fourth building.
Okay.
Correct.
No, he was saying.
That's the only bad thing, because I know I, I travel down Hart Street a lot every day and I could, I could see them from.
Oh, so you, you would prefer the one on the street?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, then that, if that, if it got down to that, that'd be fine.
And everything's going to be blacktopped where they're parked and everything or is that going to be left gravel?
It's stone now. It's stone now and I thought that, that might come up. My only concern is, and we have to ask Doug from, Doug, if there's, if it's a big issue with, with additional blacktop. I don't know how they engineered the, the retention ponds. There is no water problem now. I don't know if, if a hundred and fifty by fifteen feet additional blacktop would, would matter, you know? It's, it's a little funny you say that because we actually had a blacktop spot available and the people were so frugal that they didn't want to pay the eighty, they wanted to pay the sixty to be on the stone. And we kind of smiled about that a little bit, that they, that they just wanted a place to park it, you know?
They're used to parking where they park on stone usually, so.
I mean, I hate to say it, I have a trailer and I have a hard time finding somewhere to park things. So, and I live in town. So it's, it is a problem thing that we do have over here for people that do have stuff and.
But we, but from our perspective, we, we can only handle twenty-two, twenty-three. That's all we want and, you know, really, that's, that's.
And then, right, yeah. When we're totally done.
Can I ask a very silly question? So we have a lot of campers and trailers and that kind of stuff. So are you, are you planning on putting some kind of like secure fencing or anything like that on?
Yes, the, the, the drawing actually shows fence from building to building. So it, it would actually be helpful to build, we haven't had a problem yet. We have an electric gate now that goes, a vertical gate.
Okay, cool.
Amazing gate.
Cameras on.
But.
On the buildings, on the storage area, outdoor storage area.
Yeah, so we, we are going to fence it when, when we're done with construction. Answer your question, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I ask because that could also help with visibility of anything, you know? So, okay.
Only thing I see that I really don't like is the two units all the way on the north just because you could see them.
I'd like to just study this a little longer because, and look at the minutes, because I think there was a lot of question about the runoff of the water and everything, if they put blacktop and so forth. If my mind serves me correctly, so far as the older I get, it gets loose.
I'd have to relook at the minutes again.
I'd like to see that because, and you're the topic, I, I know you purchased the property. I don't know, you know, you put those trailers, those campers and everything there because it was brought up to our attention, to the attention of the town. It's kind of like, oh, well, let's do it and then we'll ask for forgiveness or we'll ask for permission.
It wasn't really that at all.
No, no, and I, that's.
Yeah, I, I guess I just have heard for people and I get these calls all the time.
I understand that business.
You're like, oh, we could do that, not knowing that this was not permissible.
And, and it is, it is, we've got fire trucks behind us and never, we never, now besides all that, I mean, I never thought that it was going to be an issue really, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, we never thought we were, I mean, we're industrial property, I believe there or, I don't know exactly all the zoning and everything, but behind us, the fire, you know, it's all commercial, but yeah.
You're attempting to rectify it now and?
Yeah, and I, I don't know that conceptually that I have an issue with it as long as it's along the back part of the property that, you know, faces the railroad tracks, you're not going to see.
Yeah.
So some, I, I'm just trying to envision what, you know, members of the public might be upset about or have questions about.
If you pan to the west, I mean, fire services had outdoor storage of the vehicles that they're working on and, I mean, they have cabs off of them, they have beds off of them and they get fire trucks from all around, you know, as far, you see trucks there from Hinsdale and Elk Grove Village and Chicago, you know, so it's.
So just to give the plan commission a good idea, this is zoned industrial. This is all zoned industrial. We just rezoned this from industrial to C one.
For the daycare.
For the daycare.
Mm-hmm.
So more or less everything that abuts this parcel, with the exception of this, which is a big wetland floodplain area, everything around it is zoned industrial. This is zone R one, but again, it's wetland, it's floodplain. I don't know of anything that might potentially even go in there at any time soon.
It's also floodway, so you cannot put anything in there. There won't be homes or anything across the street.
Ever?
Ever. Well, we've learned never to say never, but I would say ninety-nine percent that, right now FEMA would say that's not allowed.
Yeah, you don't, you don't want to build there.
And DNR.
Lend support that this, you know, that their storage facility is probably the best use for something in that area, right? And how do they maximize what the demand is for, like I said, I, conceptually, I don't have a problem with it. It's just, you know, how we make sure that it's applied and, you know, like, like concerns that I had, like, you know, at some point, instead of four buildings on the south end, you say, well, we just want to do more outdoor storage and completely, you know, come back and try to change it again. That's all.
Or you might sell it and do the same thing. Somebody else will come back, oh, by the way, we have a chance here to do these things.
Isn't there a way that we could limit the space and say, you're approved for twenty-two spaces? I mean, we're not afraid of any of that. I mean, that, that's our intention and it's the best use of the land. I mean, we'd be more than willing to agree to something like that. I mean, our intention is, believe me, if you ride by, I mean, we, we believe we're building a very tasteful project there, you know, and we, we, oodles of money in landscaping, I mean, blah, blah, blah. It's very, very well done, you know? So we're not going to, we don't want to junk it up, you know?
No, it's nice. And by the way, you know, the way it sits up on the hill, it's not like you drive by and it's offensive or, you know, looks, looks bad or anything like that. I would agree.
It is something we need here.
I just was just wondering in general. Oh, that's okay. Don't worry, just getting a trailer off of that.
Okay. Our next steps?
Yeah, so, well, just Mr. Chairman, I, I think we have to review the zoning, you know, the zoning ordinance as it pertains specifically to outdoor storage. And then I think that, from my perspective, I think that's the first step in this review process, so.
And that, they may have to make a stop at the BZA for that?
They, they may. I don't want to make any conclusions today, but yeah, that's something that I think we need, I'll need to look at.
Yeah, okay.
The BCA.
Did you catch that?
Yeah, forgive me, I have a little, I can't hear it quite so.
Oh, it's okay. So what our attorney was saying is that he needs to, to take a look at town ordinance and as it relates to your zoning classification and whether outdoor storage is allowed within that designation. If it's not, then that is a matter for the Board of Zoning Appeals to take up before we can, before we can take action on it. So I think we need to, I'll probably do some more homework, but we do appreciate your presentation tonight and the feedback.
We appreciate you listening.
We like the reconciliation you're trying to make too. That's, you know, you're trying to make a reconciliation on it.
Yeah.
So you're not.
And thank you for that, yeah. So, okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item E two thousand twenty-five dash eleven, Castle Rock Phase Three. Proposed primary plat for a residential development located off of Eighty-Sixth Place in the northwest corner of the town of St. John along the town's boundary lines. Mr. Reddick, good evening.
Good evening. Doug Reddick with DVG here representing Andy James and Castle Rock Phase Three. I'm going to hand out a drawing, which is the same thing, but because it's the length of the project, it's actually on two different sheets. So it's, it might be a little harder for you guys to.
Turn Limerick, turn eighty-seven. Banner House.
Everybody saw on one page.
Trying to picture this. Trying to picture it.
Did you tape this together, Doug?
No. I have a tag guy do it right before I left in the night.
Thank you. This is my house. Turns up. Yep, two months ago.
So instead of looking at two different sheets and going back and forth, there's like a, a south half and a north half.
There's a stub road right here.
So it's just simply an extension of Castle Rock. The whole property is zoned R two. We had never done anything different. It was zoned R two when Andy bought the property. As you know, we just finished the five lots, which we call Castle Rock Phase One A. They're on the east side, you can see them there of, of this map. And then it's a very unusual shaped property. It's bisected by three different pipelines. We have large wetland areas, which actually we determined not to be wetlands. Some of them were, some of them weren't. So we're trying to just kind of ride the high ground here with this winding road. We're coming in off the existing Eighty-Sixth Place. That road is near the south end there. So that road was built, the stub was built with phase one, always intending to go north into this next phase. My understanding is he's almost out of lots and the lots in phase one A, those five lots are starting to sell. We're, we're doing our first site plan on lot two in that phase. Right now it's another, actually quite large house. So what we're proposing is just an R two subdivision. All the lots probably actually far exceed your R two requirements, which is a hundred foot wide and fifteen thousand square foot minimum. You can, you can read the small print. You can see the, the lot areas around there, but twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, thirty-four thousand, twenty thousand, eighteen thousand, forty thousand, sixty-three thousand square feet. So they're all different sizes, trying to take advantage of the unique topography and drainage. A lot of it pertains, it wraps around drainage because we have water going in three different directions. So it's kind of an unusual layout. We are planning on going to the far north end and putting a, like a hammerhead turnaround with the hope that this property will, this project could extend to the north and access Eighty-first Avenue sometime in the future. Any questions?
Well, that was my question. I'm just jumping ahead.
There's, there's one parcel to the north.
I was wondering what you were going to do up there because you're going to need a turnaround up there.
Yeah, well, we're going to put that in for sure.
I do have a question. Lots seven, six and five, what is the total buildable area that is not located in a drain adjacent?
Uh.
Because I'm, by looking at it, it's showing a hundred and forty by a hundred, which makes it fourteen thousand. Our subdivision control ordinance does not allow for a buildable area to be considered that drain adjacent. So those lots would either need a variance to be that fourteen hundred or they need to come out to that fifteen hundred square feet.
Actually, that's a good question, Ashley.
Or fifteen thousand, sorry.
I started looking at this and there's retention pond right behind that and I already have my team making that pond a little smaller and moving that line. So we can accommodate that easily. It's just that the first draft of that retention pond was a little bit bigger than it needed to be, so that's not a problem.
I just happened to notice that and wanted that clarified.
It's a good catch.
Questions, comments, anyone else?
Come on. I'm here, I can answer all kinds of questions. Our plan is to come back in two weeks to request permission to advertise. Our engineering is pretty much done. We're, we're fine tuning it before we send it to John. We want it to look pretty. We're writing our stormwater report right now. So we're, we're ninety-eight percent done with our engineering, so we'll be going to him soon. We'd like to request permission to advertise two weeks from tonight, come back for another study session, see if we got any comments, and then ideally go for a public hearing in June.
June.
Yeah.
I mean, seems pretty straightforward and it doesn't have the concerns that a lot of people have as far as lot size and things like that and density and things, so.
If you've ever been back there, it's, it's unusual site, you know, the big, big pond, that Outlet C right there, it's, you know, it's got the pipelines running through it. There's a lot of water in there. It was delineated, actually determined it was not a wetland, but it's actually functioning as a very, very large detention basin for the whole community.